Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. It's very good to see so many people in the audience tonight on a rainy and thundery and lightning night. Pastor Tom said he brought that with him, so it must be a message from someplace. But I'm glad that you all are with us tonight. Those folks of you who are watching at home, on TV six or on our Facebook feed, thank you for joining us tonight for, to see your town's business being conducted. It's important and we're glad you're with us in whatever form. We'll start our meeting this evening with our traditional roll call, starting with Ms. Welch.
Hey, good evening, David Smitherman.
I'm Mike Horn.
Happy Thursday, I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
And I thought I had my phone on mute. Let's see what happens. Folks, we'll, Pastor Tom Lee has been kind enough to come over and lead us our invocation tonight. And that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember David Smitherman. Please join, please stand and join us if you're able.
Let us pray. Our fathers, we come together tonight, may we be aware of your presence here with us as we meet together. Make us aware of the many blessings that we have. We thank you for the gift of life itself. We're grateful for this town that we live in. We thank you for the freedom we have in our nation. Be with us tonight as we share together and meet together. Be with those who give leadership to our town. Guide them in good directions. Be with us now, we asking your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks Pastor Tom, always good to see you. Ms. Moore, have we had any changes to our agenda prior to going out? Very good. Council members, you have the agenda, you've had a chance to look over it. There have been no additions or revisions, so we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Mr. Manager, you have the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item number two, the consent agenda, two A. This is resolution 2023 dash zero zero one. These are the financial statements for the five months ended November 30th, 2022. Item two B is the approval of the agenda briefing minutes from December 1st, 2022. Item two C is the approval of regular meeting minutes from December 8th, 2022. And last on the consent agenda is item two D. That's approval of closed session minutes from December 8th, 2022.
Very good, ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. There are financial reports, our minutes. We approve these as a group unless any council member wishes to pull any individual item off and discuss it separately. If there are no changes, entertain a motion.
I'd like to have a change, please.
Yes, ma'am.
In addition, for the agenda briefing on December 1st, and it was mentioned they had a question about the Christmas lights and speaking wood, Ms. Moore, where it had read that I had asked the wonderful conduct of the light, et cetera. My main concern in questions was the whole being uniformed and would I have discussed that for it properly at the time?
Okay, so we'll remove that from the consent agenda and discuss that in just a moment.
So that is the approval of the briefing meeting minutes, okay.
So we'll be approving on our consent agenda, we'll be approving A, C, and D. Entertain a motion, please.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any additional discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Welch, you have the floor.
Yeah, sorry, got that out of order a little bit. If you wouldn't have known all in that first door, yeah, my main concern was that taking it more.
Okay.
Very good. With those suggested changes to the minutes, I mean, we have a motion, please, to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion, second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. PJ, you have the floor.
Good to see everybody this evening. Hope most of you are excited about tomorrow's being Friday as I am, so my favorite day of the week. For December, we had 813 calls for service, 556 security checks, 26 traffic, traffic arrests, traffic citations, seven alarms, so the alarms are coming down considerably. And with a five minute response time compared to 637 last year and 281, 47 traffic citations this time last year, and 20 alarms, still running about a five minute response time. So that's still, that usually stays pretty consistent. I did print off a sheet, this time the community policing for December from 12:01 to 12:31. Community policing handled 67% of the total calls for service inside the Lewisville town limit. So left us with 33% that were answered by zone deputies. And that can be a variance from if Lewisville deputies are busy or zone guys happen to be cutting through and they happen to be right on top of an alarm, they're going to answer up, go ahead and take it. So we have seen that number creep down with adding that deputy. So nothing really significant stands out. All the deputies, I mean, we're doing good. We thank you, those that come out to the meeting last night and those in the community that come out. So it shows what a stakeholder that you have in the, in the community and your ownership of it. So it shows a lot, the support that we have and we're grateful for it. I did want to mention just a couple of different things because you said, since we're having some bad storms, please, folks, don't drive through standing water. It takes very little water to throw your vehicle off the side of the road and especially at night. So take a little extra time to slow down. My safety tip for the month is I wanted to talk to you briefly about these gift card scams that are going around. Please, if somebody tries to solicit you for jury duty or any kind of payment for taxes or anything like that, they typically will try with these gift cards. Understand that when you scratch that number off the back and once these folks have those numbers, they don't, they don't have to have that gift card physically in their hand. Once they have the information, your money is 100% gone. So it's very hard to track these folks down. Most of them are from overseas or in a basement somewhere, these IP addresses, but time law enforcement gets it tracked down. They're packed up and moved. So it's our responsibility to make sure that we don't fall victim to these crimes. Because, you know, if you have a question about it, you know, hang up, call the non-emergency number, ask one of the Lewisville guys if you think something is a scam. So it's better to make a, hang up and make another phone call. And, and there's nothing wrong with if, you know, if somebody identifies herself as a deputy, you know, hang up, call that non-emergency number and ask to be patched back through. So it's our responsibility to kind of protect ourselves from these crimes. So I just want to make everybody aware because we do see an increased number of those. And as long as they're making money, they're going to continue to target these crimes.
Very good. Any questions, PJ?
I've got a quick one. During the month of December, just in general in our town, did we see, I think it's called porch pirates and stuff?
Not a lot. We really didn't. And I contribute a lot of that to the deputies being visible in the neighborhoods. Ring doorbell systems have come through a lot. Not saying that it doesn't happen, we get those, but it's not been on the increase like we have seen in the past.
Okay, thank you very much, PJ.
Thank you, PJ.
All right.
Stay safe out there. Very good. Ms. Welch, would you like to join me down front for a moment? Ms. Barton, please come up. For those of you who are not aware, we have an award that's called, I'm one of the reasons Lewisville is a great place to live. And it's called the IO of our LGR, if you want to pronounce it with the acronym. I don't know why we named it like, well, I named it like that, but it was years ago when I didn't know how to read. So, and I didn't think about the acronym. But this is awarded to recognized individuals in our community who've made significant contributions. Over the years, we've probably had 20 or 25 individuals that have been recognized for all the things they do to make our community a better place. This month, Councilwoman Jane Welch has nominated Maureen Barton. Let me tell you a little bit about Maureen. We've known each other for, goodness gracious, a long time. Not only is she active in the civic club and active in the community, she's also active with the Lewisville Area Arts Council. But what she's most known for is the organizer coordinator of the annual Lewisville Christmas Parade. Now, if you're not aware of this thing, if you can, if you can drive it, push it, tow it, walk it, or ride in it, you can be in it. Or pull it, you can be in it. But the, and over the years, this thing has grown from, oh, a half a dozen sewer floats to this year, we had over 150 floats or entries and marching bands. And I would estimate probably between 10 and 12,000 people lining the streets, lining Shallowford Road along the streets of Lewisville. So Maureen, we know this is no small task and we know the many years that you do it. Of course, you say you do it in your sleep, it's old hat, but we know it isn't. We know it takes a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort. And we're so grateful for your giving of the community, giving yourself of the community for this. Ms. Welch, anything?
Yes, first of all, thank you so much and for your example and being a part of the Lewisville Civic Club, which is grassroots of this community. And you've been involved in the club for how many years? 24 years. Oh, well, you know, it's just an honor that, that we can't miss. And I think everybody would agree, I think Maureen is one of Santa's elves.
Thank you very much. I'm honored and very humbled actually by this. I was trying to talk Jane out of it and she's like, no, you're coming, this is for you. So first I want to say thank you to our present town council as well as our past town councils, who over the 23 years that I've been doing the Christmas parade have supported us endlessly with many changes that we have asked them to understand. See, I had a vision and they helped to make that come to fruition. And it wouldn't be possible without their support, so thank you all for that. I'd also like to thank all of the volunteers with the Lewisville Civic Club, the Lewisville Area Arts Council, who work hours and hours, timeless years. I couldn't do it without them. There's too many to mention, you know who you are, but this is, just would not be possible without you. And I would also like to thank my family who, you know, I volunteered them to participate. My children have been part of the Lewisville Civic Club Christmas Parade unbeknownst to them since I joined. So they're voluntary members. But they have been part and parcel of the Christmas Parade since I began doing it 23 years ago. So I would just like to thank all of you for this honor and I'm truly humbled. Thank you.
Still works.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're come, we'll have three opportunities for you to speak tonight. The first one is a public forum and this is your opportunity to come up and speak to the council, share with us those things that may be on your mind, in your heart, that you'd like us to know. It's our opportunity to listen to you. We also have a public hearing tonight. If you're here for the, to speak at the public hearing, hold your comments until that particular point. And then at the end of the meeting, we have another opportunity during our second public forum for you to come up and speak. So with that, I do have one person signed up, Susan Frye. Please state your name and address, please.
165 Will Austin Court. Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody, nice to see you. I just want to comment on the new signs that the town is using now for the zoning hearing notifications. I had been aware of two locations that were, that are coming up next month, I guess, upcoming zoning hearing scheduled. And I have reason to pass by these locations regularly. And I didn't notice any zoning signs there. So I decided to go out and actually specifically look for them. And I did find that there were indeed signs posted, however, the new signs are really not noticeable. They're about three feet high. You know, they're stuck in the ground, they may be three feet high. The colors are kind of muted, they're not the, the big sign that we all, you know, that we all know and mostly don't love. But they really look more like a sign that you'd use if you were, had a little for sale sign or power washing sign kind of thing. Or, you know, yeah, for sale. Anyway, I feel it's important to ensure that the residents and others have every opportunity to be informed of the potential changes coming about. And I'd really like to ask the council to consider going back to the previous signs for zoning hearing notifications or at least use a taller sign with a bolder, more obvious lettering. And that's it, thank you.
Susan, both our manager and our planner are here and I'm sure they've heard what you said. Thank you. Anyone else to speak tonight at our first public hearing? Anyone at all? Very good, thank you. There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. And those of you at home, if you wish to make comments, you can jot them in an email and send them to townclerk@lewisvilleNC.net, townclerk@lewisvilleNC.net. And we'll be glad to make those part of our record this evening. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing and this will be for L 104. And this is a site plan amendment and amendment of uses to 771 Williams Road. Ms. Planner, it's your show.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council. My bearings here together. So tonight before us, we have a public hearing. This is L 104. The address is 771 Williams Road. To orient you, this property is located just off Williams Road, backs up to the 421 off ramp, if you will, right in the, right outside the downtown area of town. So the property included, for the record, the tax pin is 5875-643831. This property is 3.57 acres. It is currently wooded and vacant. And again, the issued address is 771 Williams Road. Currently, the property is zoned highway business conditional. That is not changing. The request is not to change the zoning of the property, but it is to amend the site plan that was originally approved on the property and also the uses that are allowed on the property. So in highway business, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. So of course, this exceeds that minimum requirement. And then the uses requested tonight are professional office, restaurant without drive-through, micro brewery or micro distillery, general merchandise store, and then lastly, school, a vocational or professional school. Not, it would not be a public school or anything like that. So just to give you a little bit of history on the property, this property was originally zoned January 13th of 2022 to highway business conditional. It was originally rezoned from RS 20, which is residential single family with minimum lot sizes of 20,000 square feet, again, to highway business. The uses approved at that time were professional office, different services categories, services, business, A, B, and personal. And then again, school vocational and professional, which would still be included in this request today. Again, just a map showing the zoning in the area. You can see some commercial zoning to the north of the property, along Shallowford Road, and then across Concord Church Road, right there around the US 421 interchange. The blue line that you see is the 500 feet within the property buffer. That is the properties that if it touches that blue line, that's who we send letters to notifying them of the public hearings for both Planning Board and Town Council. That is something that we do that's required to us by general statutes. Just to give you an idea, we did want to include this. Originally, when the commercial zoning was approved, it fell under the old 2015 comprehensive plan where the future preferred land use was highway commercial. You see in our comp plan today that it isn't really included in that for some reasons of not wanting commercial activity to extend down Williams Road. But we do not, we do not see that happening. This would, is the last property currently that is zoned highway business. But with it being zoned highway business, again, this is not a rezoning request, but when that was originally approved early 2022, about a year ago, it was the preferred land use, highway business was the preferred land use in that existing comprehensive plan that governed at that time. So just some notes to go along with the site plan and the amendment of uses. The property does have the available infrastructure that's needed. It would be on a septic system, the property has been perched for the uses and for a commercial property to be built at this location. Statements found in the Lewisville Comprehensive Plan does encourage access to neighborhood amenities on a small scale commercial development, and that is what this is intended to be. The property is located in Growth Management Area Three in the Forsyth County Legacy Plan, which is a suburban neighborhood area that also includes those neighborhood amenities. And then the future, it does identify the future proposed land use as commercial, encourages those types of opportunities that I spoke about. We wanted to give just an idea of the definitions of the uses of what they're asking for. You can see professional offices, of course, is going to be like bookkeeping, realtor offices, public relations, legal services, those types of things. Restaurant without drive-through service, pretty self-explanatory. They do have the idea that they want to do some sort of deli that might have wine or beer tasting. That's where the micro brewery, micro distillery comes in to play for that particular use. School vocational, professional, they do have a real estate office that they are planning to hold some real estate classes. They're, they're just small weekend classes that would help people wanting to enter into the real estate profession. Again, the micro brewery, micro distillery, we discussed that along with the restaurant use. And then general merchandise store that falls mainly under small retail establishment is the different types of uses that they are proposing and requesting tonight. So lastly, I wanted to show you the site plan. You can see where the building is located, that is brought up to Williams Road. The parking is towards the right of the property, towards, or excuse me, of the building. They are meeting the requirements of the landscaping with both the street yard at the front, along the frontage of Williams Road, and then the large variety and medium variety trees that are required along the parking lot in those islands around to provide some shade for the vehicles. And then you can also see they are preparing for the possibility of them having to do a stormwater control measure. They have that designed on the site as well. One other thing that I wanted to add, they did offer elevations, it didn't change. Okay, now let's try. Okay, there we go. So they did offer elevations, you can see the floor plan, it is a two-story building that they are proposing. While elevations are not required because this property is not located in the downtown overlay where we have facade requirements, they did want to offer that as part of their proposal tonight for the site plan amendment. So you can see the first floor plan, second floor plan, where they intend to have those different uses. And then you can see the elevations of what the building, they are proposing that the building will look like on the property. So they did offer that as part of their submittal, so I did want to share with that to you, with you tonight as well. So I'll go back to the site plan. This recommendation does come from the Planning Board unanimously to recommend approval of the town council. They met on November the 9th, is when they held their public hearing and they voted unanimously to recommend approval to the town council. Entertain any questions that you have.
Any questions for Stacey?
Yes, sir.
Was there supposed to be two driveways or just one?
One, that is all they proposed and that is all DOT did not. Since Williams Road is a state-maintained road, we do send this to NC DOT to see if there's any improvements that the state would require of them. And with just one driveway location, there's, that's all that NC DOT requires. And there's no improvements made to Williams Road that NC DOT is requiring of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, very thorough. So on the elevations, where it says that we've got the, thank you. Next one, your next, the front, yeah.
Okay.
Where it says front elevation, that's facing?
That's going to be facing the parking lot, if I understand that correctly, yes.
Facing the parking lot, yeah. And so which elevation is going to face the actual road?
That would be the right side elevation is what is going to be facing the road.
Okay.
And then obviously the rear would be facing towards the, not necessarily the back of the property, but like the 421.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yes, Stacy, could you speak to what the building materials would consist of?
I do not have that. The applicant is here tonight that they could possibly speak to. I would just caution, even though, yes, they did offer up elevations, we do not have specific requirements for this property like we would in the downtown overlay of specific building materials, even though they are willing to, to kind of go above and beyond and do some of those materials. But the applicant is here tonight that could possibly speak to that. Thank you.
Anything else? Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. We have several people signed up to speak. We'd like to hear from the opponents of the project first. If you'll come forward, state your name and your address. Ms. Stephan.
Hi, my name's Nancy Stephan, 305 West Steva Road. I'm just, this is my first time here, moved here from DC, hoping to get away from traffic and noise and now just kind of absorbed a lot of the noise that's going on with the Williams Road in terms of just the noise, the amount of decibels, and then adding that the beautiful trees that were, that are going to be cut down. And that was my only comment or concern.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Russell? Yes, sir, please come forward, thank you. Your handwriting's like mine.
I'm Russell Corshane, 310 West Steva Road. We basically, we just moved here in September. We moved to Lewisville because we came from Clemens and it was a mini Winston-Salem. So we tried to move somewhere that it was quiet and we weren't aware of all this going on. But so now basically it's between, like Nancy was saying, the noise and like every day it's, it's so bad with the noise. And now if we're going to add more businesses and more traffic, it's going to be worse and it's going to be worse for Williams Road as far as, you know, if you're walking or whatever, it's going to create a lot more. So I guess I'm just a little discouraged from having all this put right where we are, so that's it.
And just a quick question, where so you live, if the off ramp to 421 is here, the property is here, do you live back this way?
Yeah, so across the Williams Road, you'll see.
Yeah. I'll see if this was helpful. There. Yeah. Can you see my cursor?
Yes, ma'am.
It's right there.
Okay.
Yeah, West Steva.
West Steva, I'm sorry.
Yep. So I'm the second lot on the circle there on the top.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition this evening? If not, yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Yes, my name's Aaron Hoopmacher, I live on 315 Dab Road. And I don't know, really know if I'm in opposition or just have some concerns that I wanted to, just kind of... That I wanted to just kind of get addressed. One was where it's located at, we've got the great, great Gateway Project that's being built up. And with that, there's a sidewalk that comes right around the, the. Right after the bridge. I'm curious if it'd be a good idea to connect the sidewalk to this building. And also with the increased amount of traffic, it's really dark walking down that road. And now there's going to be some, and I don't know what time the classes are going on, like if they're going to be evening classes. Increased traffic. So that was one of my thoughts and my concerns. The other, and basically to see if we couldn't extend a sidewalk out there, just to make it a little bit safer. Just as a side note, and the good sheriff might have some more information on this. I know some of my neighbors have, have experienced some stuff. Quite a few years ago, they talked about possible drug dealing in the church parking lot. So I'm a little bit concerned about security and what could go on in these, these, these parking lots. Whether it's extra parking and cars and how that's controlled. Now, this happened before I moved here, which was like seven years ago. So I'm, it's not current. The other thing was people would park across there and come over to our neighborhoods and some people have reported things stolen. And that's where they, they park across the street from the church. But it's just additional. Concerns and also would there be additional lighting? What's the security situation looking like? And then going back to the, the path or the, the sidewalk would be, I know they're supposed to be, they're talking about a great big. Park or state park down the end of Williams Road. I don't know if we could leave space for like a. Like a route or a greenway possibly. It's not on the greenway routes right now for the 2011. I know that's being updated. But possibly a greenway so we can connect to the rest of the town and then. Use that as a stopping point. And that's all I've got.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak in kind of opposition or maybe not opposition? Very good. Speaking for the proponents, Rodney Bentley, please come forward and state your name and address.
Thank you, sir. My name is Rodney Bentley. I live at eight thousand eight Riverview Drive in Clemmons. I am the owner and operator of Salem Commercial Contracting and I'm the chosen. Contractor for this project should it move forward. So, and I've also been. Involved in the design and suggesting and so forth since, since its conception. So. So I'll do what I can to, to try to address some of the comments that have been made. And happily answer whatever questions you might have. As the gentleman, and I apologize, I'm not good with names, remembering your names. I do remember we spoke at the, at the Planning Board meeting. And so he, the question was raised about sidewalks and the possibility of them being connected to the, the. The towns project property. And as we mentioned at our Planning Board meeting, we're very open to the idea of, of doing sidewalk work. From property line to property line. Pretty familiar with that. I'm pretty used to doing that, you know, in other areas where we, we build. That, that we will put in public sidewalks and for that normally we're mandated to. So, so that would not be an issue to be able to put in the sidewalk that if that would be something that would be beneficial. To the pro, to the project and to the community. As far as parking, lighting, use of the, of the property. As, as was shown on the slides earlier, the, the general idea of, of the building is, would be office space on the upper floor. One of the, one of the suites will be Keller Williams Elite, they're the owners of the building. And this is where they want to put their real estate office. And that's where the school comes in is because Keller Williams does offer real estate classes. And those classes typically will be twice a week. Normally they're during the daytime. More often they're, they're on weekdays. It doesn't rule out evening classes, doesn't rule out weekend classes. But as a general, it is during the daytime and, and during the weekdays. The, the lower level of the building, the vision there is for it to be open to retail possibilities. Whether it's general merchandise stores, you know, clothing stores, retail store, sandwich shops, delis. We do not have, the, the owners do not have anybody, you know, as far as locked in as this is going to be my space and. So, so it's, right now it's, it's too early in that for me to be able to tell you. These particular uses are going into this building because they're just, they're just not. Only thing we know for sure is Keller Williams will be on the top floor. So. The, and as far as the site, as you're looking and the, and the size of the parking lot, I know that was somewhat of, of, that was a question at the, at the Planning Board meeting. And, and the reason for the, the size of the parking lot, I feel I need to address it. Well, one is for the, the school. Because they, they typically could be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty, you know, thirty attendees to the, to the class. And so we need to be able to accommodate that. And then two, with it being three spaces on the ground floor that are retail oriented type spaces. Yeah, I think the, I think, I think the requirement gets, allows you like two point seven spaces, parking spaces per. Space and any retail person is going to hope they got more than two or three people there shopping at one time. So. So that's why we've, you know, we've asked for additional, this size parking. The, the question about lighting. You know, night, the, the parking lot obviously will be well lit. It'll, it'll be our intent to light it. Again, if there's retail spaces and if those retails are open till eight or nine o'clock in the evening. They're going to expect that the parking lot's lit for them and we certainly anticipate doing that. The, 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 the comment about the, the elevations and that was, that was a good catch on that. As we said, the front elevation does face the parking lot. The, the right side elevation, that was designed particularly. For that reason. We wanted to design the building so that it in essence has two fronts. You have to call one of them a front and the other one has to be the right side. But so we wanted, you know, we want the curb appeal from the parking lot, obviously. But we also want the curb appeal from Williams Road. We don't want to just see the end of a building. You're, the, the question about the materials. Not to say that it's all nailed down yet, but the intent at this point would be a combination of, of stone on the first floor. The second floor would be either like a vinyl siding, like a, like a Bordenbatten type siding or a hardy, you know, synthetic siding like that. The, 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 let's see, Stacy, can we go back to the, to the elevation? The, the, the porch, you'll see there's porch covers, the intent arrow, those would be like standing seam metal roofs. And then the, the mass roof at the top would be just like a, like a shingle, an architectural shingle. You'll also notice on the rear elevation of the building because that also has a little visibility. To some degree coming up from the, from the off-ramp. The rear of the building has, has been elevated a little bit with, with some balconies on the back and some, some railings to try to enhance the back of that a little bit. And to serve two purposes. If, if either one of those in spaces were to be leased to a, a sandwich shop or, you know, a deli, something like that. They wanted to have outdoor seating. What you, what you see on that rear elevation, those are glass roll-up doors. So that they can simply raise the back of the, of their space and picnic tables and everything outside. And those tables would be undercover by those balconies that are above. And then the balconies above serve for some, some outside areas for the. You know, for the, for the professional offices that are, that are on the top floor. So. Other than that, I don't know what, Stacy's done a fantastic job of, of setting you up. So I, I don't know what else I need to really add other than that. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Very good, Mr. Bentley.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor and support of this project? Anyone at all? Alrighty, we'll close the public hearing. Council members, questions? Stacey, just a couple real quick. When we're talking about lighting for the parking lot, that's conforming to our dark sky, dark, dark sky kind of provisions where it's, it's controlled. So the light doesn't get off-premise.
Yes, in our non-residential standards and our unified development ordinance, we do have a lighting, a lighting ordinance. That has specific measurements of parking lots, the, a maximum. Lumen, if you will, of, of the brightness of parking lots, sidewalks, entry areas and all of those things for commercial areas that they, this will have to abide by.
I didn't see the, the sidewalk on the submitted plan. Is that, is that going to be an addition?
It can be. They have, have offered that. That is not a requirement. This, Williams Road is not in the. Twenty thou, two thousand eleven Hatchell Greenway and Pedestrians Connection Plan that would require a sidewalk in this location.
Council members?
I would ask though that if on, on the site, can you pull the site plan back up again, please? And the roadway front, it looks like that. If at such time sidewalk might become a viable pro, project. That this site plan allows for, appears to allow for plenty of room to install one at some point in time, I guess. I, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at at this point in time, I don't know that I would necessarily want to. Let, make or insist that the developer go from property line to property line and put up a sidewalk to nowhere. As if one can be put in later as a project that might extend it to wherever, you know.
It, it very well could be. I think there's plenty of right of way in that area. That, you know, we could, you know, hopefully accommodate a sidewalk in the future if that was the pleasure of the council.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick one, please, Stacy. I know only in recent years have we addressed the trees and I know that was a concern that was, what was brought up. I know it's a large building, a lot of parking. Can you speak to that as far as what kind of remaining trees we might could expect?
They do have to leave the buffer all the way around the property. Anytime that a commercial property abuts residential property or residentially zoned property. There's a visual buffer that has to remain. And so the intent is to essentially. Just only take out the trees that are required to be taken out, to leave the remaining trees on the property. But they will have to take into consideration where, if required, a stormwater control measure would go. And, and also where a septic field may go. Because there's not sewer in this area for the property. But aside from that. They're, they're hoping to, you can, if you can see like around the perimeter of the property. And then much more here, all of those trees to remain. And then, you know, hopefully. Keep what, what they would not have to take out for the building parking lot and then those other things that would, they, they would have to have on the property.
How many feet of buffer do you have there on that corner? Area is it fifteen?
Are you saying over here?
Yeah. If you've got, yeah.
That's probably about eighty, two hundred feet.
And then back on the, back, the whole other part of the triangle is fifteen probably?
Oh, no, over here is forty.
Forty. Okay, so forty in a year.
About twenty.
Okay. So it will be visible then coming off of four twenty-one? The property itself.
Through the trees, it possibly could be.
Ready. Council members?
Will there be any issue? I know it's going to have to be septic tank. And if they do food, I know some places in Winston won't let you do food on a septic tank. It has to be hooked up to sewer. Will that be an issue for them?
Well, that would be between them and the Public Health Department, the Environmental Health Division of Public Health. I know the property has been perched in multiple locations. They would just have to be able to obtain that for the amount of flow that's coming from the building and the, the system would have to be sized correctly. The septic system would have to be sized correctly in order to accommodate whatever flows would be coming from the building and environmental health would determine that.
Stacy, going back to sidewalk gateway project, when it does come through, is it going to butt right there at that ramp or is it, does it stop at the roundabout? Any improvements that we're doing?
Stops at the roundabout.
Okay.
Comes across the bridge and then. Kind of stops there at that location.
Thank you.
Anything else, council members? Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your comments. Sometimes we are able to, to respond. Sometimes we're not able to respond, but please know that we've heard them. And we will, we'll pay particular attention to them and, and, and know that, that you had an opportunity and we appreciate your taking the time to speak to us. With that, council members, this is, this was a public hearing. It's announced before us, requires a motion to either approve or deny.
I'm going to motion to approve L one oh four.
I'll second that.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you for investing in our community. Alrighty. I believe we are down to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item number twelve A of new business. It's Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero-two. Qualifications-based selection exemption. North Carolina general statutes require a special process for procurement of architectural, engineering and related services. This multi-part process would typically include a request for qualifications or RFQ. In which firms prepare a submittal package followed by assessment of qualifications and then negotiations on the actual cost or fee. This process can hurt small projects because firms may not want to go to all of these efforts for a low-value job. Also, we have seen the process inhibit participation by small or local firms as they may not have the staff or large submittal package offered by big firms. However, the state does allow us to exempt small projects from this lengthy process for projects under fifty thousand dollars. So for example, it would make it much easier for us to procure an architect for the assessment of the town hall annex. Or a surveyor to do a boundary survey or topo on property being acquired by the town. In order to make this streamlined approach legal, the Town Council would have to approve this small project exemption. So town staff recommends approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero-two.
Any questions for the manager? Entertained a motion, please, council members?
Second.
Ms. Walts makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is item number twelve B under new business and it's about the Moser property on Louisville-Viana Road. The town is grateful to property owners who would consider donation of their property to the town for public purposes or to serve community needs. Of course, each potential donation should be considered carefully, just like any other acquisition of real estate. In fact, the North Carolina statutes indicate the governing body needs to decide whether or not to accept a donation. It came to my attention that there was an attempted donation of property to the town, but we need to follow the process for Town Council to consider the donation. In this case, the property is a zero point zero four six acre tract on Louisville-Viana Road, previously owned by Ms. Diane Jones-Moser. The parcel is very small with an average width of fifteen point nine feet and an average length of a hundred and thirty-four feet. Our research indicates the parcel in question is not adjacent to any town-owned property. It is not an easement maintained by the town. It is not large enough for any public use like a park. And it is not aligned with any public plan or policy. Acquisition of the property appears to incur only liability without any discernible public benefit. Therefore, staff recommends that Town Council should decline donation of the zero point zero four six acre property on Louisville-Viana Road.
Very good. Any questions for the manager? Entertained a motion, please?
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? Let me just say, and let me echo the, the manager's comments. We have been extremely fortunate in Louisville to receive wonderful donations of land. The, the Moser family in particular has been very generous in two particular parcels that they have, have donated to the town. One, of course, on Chaliford Road that we hope to have at some point a future park. And one out Louisville-Viana Road, which is approximately fourteen and a half acres, I believe. So we are extremely grateful to the Moser family. In this particular case, the town doesn't really have a useful purpose for this. And other than carrying the liability of it, it probably is not a, it would not make sense for us to, to accept at this point. But again, we appreciate your thoughts and your consideration. No other comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Stacy, we are going to set a public hearing for L one oh three. And this is for a conditional district rezoning of seven point four five acres off the future extension of the Great Wagon Road.
Yes, the request is to rezone a property off the Gate, Great Wagon Road. From RS twenty, which is a residential single-family zoning district. To RM eight, which is a residential multifamily zoning district. The request that is before us is for a town home development. The property is seven point four five acres and tonight's request is adoption of Resolution two zero two three, zero zero three. To set a public hearing for this particular rezoning request. to set a public hearing for this particular rezoning request for the date of February ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Very good. Obviously, council members, we'll get a much more thorough explanation and briefing when it comes before us as our, as our meetings progress in February. Any questions for the planner?
Motion.
Entertaining motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Stacy, we have another public hearing, and this is L one oh five to set a public hearing for February ninth for conditional district, district rezoning of eleven thirty-eight Lewisville-Clemens Road.
Yes, sir. This is, this is, property has come before you before. This is along Lewisville-Clemens Road. The property backs up to Kaplan, Early Learning, just to orient you to where the location is at eleven thirty-eight Lewisville-Clemens Road. The request is to rezone from RS nine, again residential single-family zoning district where a single-family development was approved a couple of years ago, to RM five, which is residential multifamily for a twin home development. It's a little bit different than town home, but it is more like duplexes and that sort of thing that is now going to be proposed on the property. Location again stays the same, but since the request is different, the site plan will be different. They do have to go through a rezoning process, which includes public hearings. So tonight's request, Resolution two zero two three zero zero four, to set the public hearing for this request for February ninth as well.
Any questions for the planner? Entertaining motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll have two public hearings in February.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item number twelve E under new business. The town of Lewisville and Solomon Development held a mediation session on December twentieth in order to resolve the dispute between the parties. And this session resulted in a tentative settlement agreement. In a special called meeting held on December twenty-ninth, the town council approved the mediated settlement agreement. Now, the mediated settlement agreement provided the framework for the settlement. And the attorneys are finalizing the details such as preparation of the deed for transfer of real estate to the town of Lewisville. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero-five would authorize the town manager to sign the finalized agreement following review by the town attorney. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero-five is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Ladies and gentlemen, many of you are aware of the apartment building on Shallowford Square that was proposed by Solomon Development Company in twenty twenty. Following an extensive process by our planning board to review this project, including public hearings in which many of you attended, the council did not approve the proposed project. Last year, Solomon Development notified the town of its intention to sue the town for eight million dollars in compensatory and punitive damages, as well as attorney fees for not approving the apartment project. Additionally, Solomon Development notified the council, the council of its intention to sue the individual council members who voted not to approve the project, as well as certain planning board members. The town and Solomon engaged in several months of negotiations in an effort to avoid going to court. Our goal was to settle the Solomon Development's claims against both the town and the individual, individual council members and planning board members. We were unable to reach an agreement with Solomon Development. So as a next step, the town requested a third-party mediation in an attempt to resolve the matter. Participating for the town in the mediation were Mayor Mike Horn, council members Ken Sadler, and council, councilwoman Melissa Hunt. Participating for Solomon Development were Julie and Jeff Zinger. All parties had retained legal counsel who also participated in negotiations and in the mediation. The mediation occurred in December of last year, resulting in an agreement that the town will pay Solomon Development approximately two million dollars, which includes acquiring the properties that were to be the site of the apartment building. After many hours of discussion among council members and at the advice of our attorneys, the council reluctantly agreed to this settlement to avoid a jury trial in which a favorable verdict for the town was uncertain. And that could also have resulted in compensatory and punitive damages significantly greater than, than the settlement that was reached. Neither the town or any town official has agreed that any mistakes were made in the decision not to approve this project. However, council believes it is fiscally responsible to agree to this settlement in order to avoid the cost of several years of litigation and the potential for the town to incur greater liability from a jury decision. It will also be beneficial for the town to own the property near Shallowford Square that is being acquired as part of the settlement. I am confident that I speak for those, those council members who voted not to approve the proposed apartment building project as its proposed location on South, South, and its proposed location on Shallowford Square. And that we acted in what we believe was the best interest of our town and our residents. While not requiring an increase in our residents' property taxes to pay this settlement, doing so will have a significant impact on our general fund balance, resulting in both short and long-term implications for our town and our residents. Council members, as we have already approved this settlement, I make the motion to authorize our town manager to sign the final agreement that is being prepared by our attorneys.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Alrighty, administrative reports. Upcoming events at Shallowford Square?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know with the weather outside is probably not a surprise that we don't have any upcoming events at Shallowford Square. However, there is an upcoming town holiday, and the town offices will be closed on January sixteenth for the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Clerk, you have several items for us?
Yes, sir. Counsel, I just would like to remind you of your council retreat on January twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. The Friday evening retreat will begin at six o'clock, and on Saturday morning, I believe it begins at nine AM. Also, a reminder that the Town and State Dinner will be held at the Raleigh Convention Center on February twenty-second at five o'clock. If you would like to attend, please let me know and we will get you registered for that event. If you can let me know by February first to ensure availability, that would be great as well.
Dora, if I, if I might. You might enunciate that's Town and State, not Town and Steak.
Yes, it's, it's not steak and lobster.
And just if you will, mark your calendars for the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual City Vision. It will be held in Concord this year, April twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh.
Very good. James, we have some approvals of our specially called meetings, minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. This is item thirteen G on the agenda. And this one, these were the approvals at the special called meeting on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. This comes back from what we discussed in item twelve E, which was the settled, mediated settlement agreement. So in order to implement that, item thirteen G one, that was ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six seven, amending budget ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one to fund the mediated settlement agreement. Then the next item, thirteen G two, that was Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven three, and which was the actual approval of the mediated settlement agreement between the town of Lewisville and Solomon Development LLC.
Mr. Manager, if I can, please. Ladies and gentlemen, that specially called meeting was well advertised. We wanted to be sure folks knew we were having it. It was open to the public. We took these, we went into closed session to arrive at this decision, and then we came out of the, out of closed session and vote, voted on both of these in a public session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up is thirteen H. Now, these were the approvals taken at the briefing and action meeting on January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Thirteen H, H one, that's ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three. It was amending the twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one budget ordinance in order to replenish Parks and Recreation Department contingency fund. The next item right below it, thirteen H two, that's ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four, also amending the twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one budget ordinance in order to increase the Mary Alice Warren Community Center Maintenance and Repairs Budget Line item.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen, we're at the second opportunity to address the council with anything that may be on your mind. This is our opportunity once again to listen to you. Maybe you've heard something during the council meeting that you'd like to comment on. If so, please come forward. State your name and address. Yes, ma'am?
Susan Frye, one sixty-five, Will Austin Court. I just want to say thank you to all of you and what you do for the town. And it's, doesn't go unnoticed. It's appreciated. That's it.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else? Council members, closing comments?
I'd like to chime in.
Yes, sir.
Momentarily. I agree with what Susan said in her first comment in the, the first form. When it comes to these signs denoting where an issue of zoning is coming up, the, the, the current signs that are out there right now on the two properties that, that are, are coming up, those are inadequate. I'm not sure how we got to that, but we need to get back to where we were. When we rode up Bellnet Drive on the float from the Christmas parade doubling back to the town square, Melissa and I looked at that sign and like, what the heck is that? You know, I mean, I'm serious. And we're on council, and we don't even know what it is. So, that, that's not going to work, okay? I just, I will just get that out there.
Very good. And let me first say, we appreciate the effort to be creative, but maybe we can do some adjustments so that we're a little more visible. Council members, anything else? If not, then we'll, ladies and gentlemen, those of you at home, thank you for watching. I hope it's been entertaining. Those of you here in the chamber with us, thank you again. It's always nice to have faces out there to be able to talk with and, and you all to come and show your interest in, in our town government. So thank you very much to be here. Pastor Tom, it's always good to see you. Thanks for coming out on the thunder and lightning, and maybe you can speak to the, the creator of that and, and we'll have a little better weather next time. With that, council members, want to take a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned.